This meeting is being recorded.
This is on Tuesday, December twentieth. This is a special meeting in the next hour regarding CEDA and an Economic Development Authority organization, kind of an introduction meeting, so we'll start you with a called order.
Mayor Ihorst.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Here.
Councilor Bergner.
Here.
Councilor Richards.
Here.
Councilor Cross.
Here.
We have an agenda in front of us. Unless there's any amendments, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as is. Any comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Well, tonight, we have Chris Geeson and Ron Ziegler from CEDA. And I was going through my EDA file today, and I remember the first email to Chris back in November of 2021. We started talking about this, so it's, of course, Ron, we've been talking about this for years. Now that we have our sewer project in front of us, the opportunity is for us to start the discussion about setting up a EDA like we did, we're talking about last March. But now I think we're in a position with a new council members to continue that discussion. So with that, you want to come to the podium and start the discussion to be an interactive discussion, so we'll have you lead that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and a special thanks to Sonny for reaching back out and getting this rock and roll again. I know it was a lot of discussion earlier this year. If you can't hear me, just tell me to speak louder and go all the way up to eleven if you want, but you know, just jump in with any questions and that kind of thing, but I wanted to introduce Ron Ziegler, our CEO, he's going to be my note taker tonight, so if you have any questions or anything to, he'll, I'm sure, take care of that. Chime in. But yeah, if you remember back in, was it March, when we last had this discussion? We talked about what an EDA is, what the powers are, how you go about setting one up, what it might look like, what they might be able to do. We had a really good discussion, I think it lasted probably around an hour, hour and fifteen minutes at that time. And so I just wanted to quickly kind of just touch base since it's been a while on that, that discussion. If there were any questions that you were wondering about, or anybody wanted me to go over anything from that last meeting. But what we'd be doing otherwise is just kind of going through the steps of considering establishing an EDA. Setting the framework up, setting a, you know, what that board might look like, and then starting for them to work on a work plan. And then by the end of this exercise, probably around March, maybe April thereabout, you know, it just depends on how it all flows with the city. The EDA is established, appointed, has a work plan, and can be on its own and start doing its own thing and reporting into the city council on what they're working on. So that's kind of the overarching umbrella, but before I kind of dive in tonight, stuff that, if you guys have questions about the process or the last meeting, I mean, be happy to talk about it.
Well, I think what we have is we've got some new people that are here tonight that aren't familiar with, with the whole CEDA thing, okay? You know, we were trying to bring into planning and zoning so that at least they had a little bit of an understanding of how this works and everything. So you might want to start from some basics for them, okay, to kind of help bring them in. And can you guys hear him okay?
Okay. Perfect. So kind of at a high level, an Economic Development Authority is a special unit of government that's created by a city to focus on development projects. And the city council can restrict its ability from, really from any of the steps to all of the steps, how do they want to do it? It's a little different in a, maybe they're like a planning and zoning commission or a park board in the fact that technically, under state law, they can own their own property, they can set their own tax levies, they can own property, they can sue and be sued in their own name, enter contracts, do all kinds of things. But in order for a city to actually establish that entity, they have to do what's called an enabling resolution, which then puts all the parameters into it. So it could be, you know, limiting if they can buy, you know, buy land, or if they could enter contracts with help. So most often with cities the size of Orinoco and the size of cities that we work with, the EDA actually functions as just an advisory board, basically the same. I think that's what we talked about at the last meeting is that the EDA for Orinoco is the council's forum, would act in that same, similar fashions, just advisory. The beauty of that, though, is that you're able to get small side opinions and outside perspectives, small side energy into moving projects forward, visioning for the community, and just kind of getting things done outside of the council meetings. You know, there's a lot going on at council that needs its focus, but when you start getting the gritty gritty of project, whether that's a, you know, a downtown type thing, or a loan program, or, I mean, you'll see it even on planning and zoning, there's a lot of details there that you don't really necessarily want to discuss that for council meetings, to get that out of the first, first of all. So kind of with that in mind, the city council had asked us to come in to talk about providing staffing services, that's what we do as a nonprofit. Based out of Chatfield, we're a five one secret reading, we focus on rural communities. Orinoco is about the sweet spot of size that we really work with, you know, that thousand, maybe two thousand even population. We've been around since nineteen eighty-six, we've worked in both sixteen, seventeen communities at this point, we've got forty-two staff members, forty-one depending on the day, but yeah, so I, Ron and I, just anything, it's a nickel for yours, so that's kind of who we are, but when the city approached us about doing some work with the city around in the future, mainly because like the mayor said, the sewer plant was coming online and there was a little uptick in projects and activity. We started talking with the mayor about, maybe we'll help you get an EDA established, hit the ground running, create a work plan, kind of give you some guidance so that if you do choose to hire us on a ongoing basis, there's some good groundwork that's already there, we don't have to spend that time inventing the deal essentially. So where we, I guess, now in the middle of the process, we started earlier this year, but trying to look at, you know, how do we establish that EDA? What is it going to look like? How's it going to work for Orinoco? And the council will have some decisions to make, starting tonight, in terms of makeup, size, making some mayoral appointments to the EDA. And for the next meeting especially, considering adopting a resolution to establish, deciding to move forward or not. And, you know, there's, there isn't a right or wrong answer in that regard, but in terms of what we're able to do as a city, sort of with an EDA, like most things cities do, state has a lot of say in how you do it, how you do it, process, all that. So even though that seems like there's a lot of decisions, state of Minnesota, that's kind of so I'm happy to answer any questions about what an EDA can do or how it works. What we do, if I say something in the presentation later, just jump in and I'm happy to talk, so.
So the EDA's authority, is that set up through, through a set of bylaws that's drawn by, drawn up by the council and and versus actually being a function of the city itself?
Yeah, yeah, so the first step is, is a resolution that sets the legal structure for the EDA. That, that either says you can have all the powers the state gives you, or just some of them, or none of them unless you're safe. And most cities will say you can't give any of them unless it's safe.
Because that's all structured to.
Structure. Yeah, yeah, and then there's a set of bylaws that will come forward too. Those are fairly boilerplate, the state tells them how to operate, you may have to have a vice president, treasurer, and that kind of thing. Really where the bylaws come in, in the endy for an EDA is if you're, you're talking about an EDA that's much larger, or a much larger organization where you might have a full file of staff, you might have like the same hall sized cities where they're actually operating as a team. Technically, under Minnesota law, EDA is sort of a subdivision of state, which is like, that's all a city, that's.
There's some division of the state now that it's a city.
Correct, correct, so it's, it's, this enabling resolution, once it's created, if, if the city creates it, creates it as its own entity to be able to operate on its own, it can't. Most cities, most cities don't, mostly they're not set enough so that it's merely a advisory.
Okay, so you talked about the state being in charge of it, so is that, so is that similar to what the Met Council is of cities, it's a government organization over seven counties?
No, no, that's, that's maybe a little different. You know, this one, the city council has to change it, you know, versus like the Met Council or even EMC, EMC would be more like the Met Council on my mind, the governor gets involved, that kind of thing. Basically, the state is involved to the extent that it outlines what, what the city can and can't do. And then if the city wants to be more hands-on, it can, if it wants to be more hands-off and let it operate and hire and fire on its own, if they want to, you know, run their own checkbook, if they want to have their own attorney, that's really what the bylaws would do, you know, but in, in excuse me, in a size, town, the size board, oh, if it's functioning as an advisory committee, road stretch, there must be water, but with that, last I turned the pot. Oh, in a smaller town like Orinoco, all of the towns that we work with, they function as an apartment of the city. So no different than public works, parking wreck, planning and zoning, you know, they, they use the city finance office, they, they use the city checkbook, you know, they're not running their own. I think I know one city that we work with that actually sets its own levy, and that was a decision that they, they actively made because of how their budget worked in that city, I think it's good. But otherwise, oh my gosh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chris, could you talk a little bit about the makeup of, of the EDA?
Sure.
So they understand, usually typically, but I, I know it can be made up multiple ways.
Yeah, and so that's also an enabling resolution, a part of that setup is setting the structure. And so by law, by state law, we have to pick a seven, a five, or a three-member board at a city level. The city council has to have at least two representatives on that. The state law also says that those terms are six years for each of the board members. So it's, it's kind of a commitment for folks, it's a little different than maybe what you would see as a, as a mayor term, or a council member term, or even planning and zoning term. But, you know, in an EDA case, you know, you're looking at a six-year term. The city council as a whole could act as the entire board. Most of them don't do that, Rochester has the council act as the, as the EDA. Old State County has the HRA, the county board acts as, as that. Most cities, I think what you guys had talked about last time was taking the, the blend in approach where you'd have two council members, lands required, and then, you know, the three or four public members. Who those come from, where they come from is actually up to the mayor. The mayor gets to point those numbers, and then the council gets to confirm that. So I guess the council couldn't veto whatever the mayor puts forward, but that's, that's for you guys to figure out, so. But that, that's kind of the general makeup as to what, what an EDA would look like. And then they have their own set of meetings, just like planning and zoning does. If the city council decides to give them staff support or budget, now that's a council decision, you know, hold on, different ways from there. But the goal is to have the council give that board kind of mission, as to here are the things we'd like to see it work on, you know, maybe that's downtown, maybe that's we need this type of business or that type of business, or we don't want that type of, whatever it might be, you know, kind of giving that charge. And then the EDA itself, those members will bring forward ideas too, and bring those to council. And then generally, with the, the size of town you are, if it's acting as an advisory committee, generally, the EDA will bring forward ideas for the council to approve. And so they're really not operating on their own, to the extent that the council hasn't given them that, that authority. Well, that's kind of a great segue, actually, into what I'm hoping we can kind of talk about tonight. Again, just jump in with any questions, happy to explain it. But if you guys got your pockets, there's a number of different things in there, and really what we're looking at is depending on that discussion as to what, what comes next. You know, I think at this point in the process, you guys are pretty, you seem pretty open to establishing an EDA. Question then becomes, what does it look like, how big is it, who's on it, and what are they working on? And so what I did is I went ahead and put together just a draft enabling resolution. This is very boilerplate in terms of if you went to other cities and looked at what their enabling resolution looks like, you probably would think I just copied and pasted, because that's pretty much what most of them do. So there's no magic to this, other than it meets the, the test that state requires in the statute, but in that, that, that's it's a H three, I suppose it would be, it's probably a memo, and it's, it's talking about the next steps, number one, creating an enabling resolution. And so you're required to have that, there's a process that state law outlines that you need to take. You have a public hearing that gets published in the newspaper twice. And then if you want to change that, you have to go through that same process again. So, you know, you decided, oh gosh, we actually need to have less restrictions or more restrictions on the EDA. That rarely happens, but you know, you might want to change something after a few years. You can do that, but you have to, have to go through the process, notify the public, have that. Same thing if you wanted to change the board. You wanted to go from a five to a three, or a five to a seven, or whatever that makes would be. Then you'd have to go through that process again to, to, to do that. That's probably the most common mistake you see cities make, is they just say, oh, let's just change to a five, let's just amend our bylaws, whatever. You're never going to get bought, it's, it's not something anybody ever checks, but it's just, it's not correct either, so. So yeah, that's, that's really the first order of business tonight, is I did include that, that template for the enabling resolution, just to give you a flavor of what that would look like. You know, of course, we're not attorneys, so we want you to run this past your, your city attorney and make sure that they're okay with it. And however you want to modify it, but really, the, the resolutions, three big sections are the first three, you know, kind of the background bindings, that's, that's fairly typical across the board, but that's why you're establishing, you want to further the, the development and orderly growth of the city, and, and that's the whole purpose of what, what the EDA would be charged to do. You're creating the, the enabling resolution, and then limiting the powers. So section two just says, the EDA can have all the powers that the state gives it, and then in the section three, you'll limit. So it's kind of a yin and the yang there, but the, the section three is where the limits come in. And basically, those things are, you know, if the EDA wants to do any of these things, they have to come to council first and get permission. So selling bonds or other obligations has to be the EDA. There's actually some really functional reasons why the EDA would sell bonds instead of the city, a lot of cases. Both Chatfield and from the city, actually, had the EDA issue bonds, I mean, half of the cities actually maneuver the finance books in a way that are applicable to the city and avoid issues with so, I think, I think both cases, the EDA issued the bonds so that the city can build the city hall, and then the city pays EDA in rent, even though the city gives the EDA its money and vice versa. So it's all on paper, but it's, it's one of those skills, kind of leverages, you know, state law that allows some different maneuvers to play. So, so again, this would be limiting that, must be the, the council. The EDA shall follow the budget costs for the city, for the city departments, and provided by the city in accordance with the same department. So basically, they would have to operate like parking wreck, public works, you know, any other department, city, applied by their budgeting, spending policies, whatever those might be. The EDA shall obtain approval from the council prior to expending funds outside of its budget. So, you know, through the budget process, you might decide someday to give the EDA a little pot of money to make some, you know, marketing decisions, or put some brochures together. That necessarily might not be something they come and ask for approval for, because you've already set aside five thousand bucks for that and said, go ahead and do what you think is best. But if there was some new program that they wanted to come forward with, or they wanted to approve a project, or some assistance in the loan, or grant program, they'd have to come forward to you and, and make sure that that was okay, either, you know, just in general, and so they can operate the program on their own. Or every time they, they issue a loan, or every time they issue a grant, that may be something they have to come back to and ask the council. That's more just a matter of how you guys want to see it, it happen, but basically, this one is just saying they can't do anything unless you guys say they can. Development, redevelopment plans, the EDA shall be consistent with the city comprehensive plan and official controls implementing the comprehensive. So you're not doing anything at EDA that's inconsistent with planning, zoning, or any of the long-term plans of the city. And then the EDA shall approve or get its approval for the proposed plans prior to the patients. So any redevelopment plans, or you know, if you start doing TIF districts, you might have a municipal development district that gets created. I think you guys already have a TIF district, CH Robinson Projects, you probably already have that, but, you know, that could have been something that you could operate under the EDA too, so. Some of these things are kind of duplicative at our level of size and complexity, but yeah, it, it gives you some advantages when it comes to dividing our, or splitting responsibilities. The other thing is, you know, the enabling resolution may only be modified, but is authorized by the end. So, so basically, that one is just saying that if the state law changes, you know, the, the resolution may be modified to reflect that, that change in state law. Yeah, and then that last one is basically, group number three is just making sure that you're not going back on any bonds that the city may have sold or vice versa, so. Stepping on toes that way, and stepping on toes with the EDA also, so. That's, that's kind of the, the scope of the limits of powers, which is basically saying, everything that the, the EDA does has to be sent through council for approval, or be approved in advance of, of council or EDA doing it, so. It's a very typical resolution, the big decision points in it are what's the size of the board, you know, I plugged in five, it could be seven or three too. That number I would recommend, something is based on what you think you can get, you know, what, what's appropriate, what do your other boards look like? Can you get a form, you know, an EDA can't function unless there's a board, other than just like a council or meeting and zoning. And then, you know, are the ones, are they too restrictive, or? I mean, that, that's kind of up to you guys to decide, to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. I guess I'll, I'll just stop there for a second and see if there's questions.
So can you try then, think about the five-member versus seven-member? And the only comment, I guess, about the five versus the seven is that we have to follow open meeting laws. So we still have to have a quorum. So with a five-member, you'd need a quorum of three people. Whereas if it was a seven number, or it would be four. So that's just one thought I thought about, maybe a seven might be better. The other, the other thought I like about a seven-member versus five is that I think the makeup of the public side, or the council side too, but I, I envision, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it'd be nice to have experience and background, whether it's financial, business, marketing, planning. I think those will all be good characters, characteristics to have of the makeup of the committee too.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point, you know, there, there isn't a wrong answer, you know, it's just based on what you think would be best, size-wise. You know, you're, you're absolutely right that, you know, the open meeting law does apply, so, you know, if you're trying to do a business and only get three members, because somebody's always out of town, you know, maybe that person that's always out of town might not be a good fit for that, that board. But at the same time, you know, the EDA can also set up subcommittees. And sometimes those subcommittees aren't, uh, uh, subject to the open meeting law. So for an example, you know, if you had a loan fund, and you had a loan committee set up that was less than a quorum, so you had one or two members of the, the board, you know, less than, than three, or less than four. You know, then the EDA, that, that subcommittee, the loan committee would be able to review the private data of that particular application, the business plan, the projections, cash returns, you know, those types of things outside of that open public meeting, meeting forum, because the, the data practices laws does exempt that type of information from becoming public record. You know, ultimately, the loan committee would have to make a recommendation to the full EDA. The full EDA would have to know how much they're borrowing, what the request is, what it's for, who it is, what the terms are, all of that one stuff. And that would all be a matter of public record and, you know, public meeting. But at least the, the business plan and the, the tax returns and all those kind of particulars are, are be able, are able to be held private. At that point, so there's some, some different shades to gray of, of that, but the idea is the same, yeah, open meeting, and then what works for quorum.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but, but the EDA can have not just citizens of Orinoco, but perhaps business owners, I mean, they, you know, so they may live somewhere else, but participate in business, you know, so there's a, a slightly different mix that, that you may be able to reach for membership, as opposed to, council, you must live here to be elected, and that sort of.
Slightly different interest when it comes to EDA, you know, it's, it's, you know, again, a mayoral appointment based on council consent. But, you know, there's no, got a law regarding residency. Now, are you going to appoint somebody that lives in Minneapolis and doesn't have a business here? You could, but it's not going to help probably your mission. But if you have, you know, a developer, or a realtor, or a banker that just lives outside of town, or you have somebody that manufacturer, you know, one of your big taxpayers in town, but they live in Rochester. Yeah, you might, you might think of them as, as somebody that has something to add of value, so there, there isn't a restriction on that.
I just want to, council member, what are your thoughts regarding the size of the committee makeup?
Yeah, I, I think that what you were saying with the seven versus the five makes sense to be able to do it with, with seven. I, I agree with that, that way, if you got a quorum, it takes four people. But I think it's something that will keep the meeting going. Where if you were with five and you ended up with three, I just think it'd be a little bit tougher. You know, so that's, I think that that was a good good suggestion to go that way as, as seven.
I like seven as well, I think I think we need to be thoughtful, you know, of the people and experience, and, and and make sure that they represent the community the way we want. Right now, our council is made up of, no offense, but the majority, retired men. That doesn't represent our community, our community, we know, I know, but it's true, our community i- is actually quite opposite of that. Our community is quite young, and, and so we just, I want, I need that, I, I really think that that should be a focus too, that we make sure that that, yeah, the younger group that is the majority of this community is, is.
Yeah, our survey.
Is represented.
We did an age-friendly survey here just recently, we're in the process of setting up a age-friendly, and we did a survey, and, and the average age is thirty-six years old. And only thirteen percent of the people that responded are over sixty. So it's, and it's, it's telling stories, that's for sure.
Well, and just census data shows that too, so it's not even just our survey, but it's census data, so. But I think that's really important, because business owners, that's who they're going to target, you know, they're going to target the those who are the younger buyers and things like that.
And to me, I, I would like the idea of it not being all council, but have, you know, a good mix, so people aren't looking at it as the council is, is running it, you know, so the people are a part of it.
Chris, do planning and zoning, does there, is there ever, ever a representative that crosses over and is on both?
I, I'm sure it happens, you know, especially in smaller communities, there's only so many volunteers too, you know, when you actually put the, the word out. So there's nothing, nothing wrong with it, you know, if you have a lot of people or have really good candidates. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's completely up to you. What was the other one that's been mentioned? Oh, the other thing on that too, you know, you mentioned, you know, having the, the perception that it's not just council running it. Some committees, and for some, I mean, when I worked with Stuartville, their mayor made a kind of what would be, but kind of a point, I guess, to say that, you know, none of the council members would be the chair of it. So, you know, the EDA gets to elect its own chair, and he just asked the council members that he appointed, you know, hey, you know, let, let the volunteer, you know, the residents do that. Good, bad, or indifferent, you know, that's. Good, bad, or indifferent, you know, that's just what they did, others, it is the mayor, others, it's a council member, or it just kind of rotates, or maybe the. Who's there that day or who wasn't there that day, how you doing, so, yeah.
And and, you know, I like, I like your idea of planning. Having someone from planning and zoning, because you would think that those two entities would want to work hand in hand, because. You know. Planning and zoning is all about, you know, planning and zoning of the city and what's what's happening with properties.
It's a great opportunity for cross pollinating, you know, different things, so, you know, when with the seven board member, you get, you know, a little little extra room to to have different personalities in.
So is your preference also seven then?
So with this, now that we've recently changed our committee's structures to be one instead of two. Council reps, would we apply that to this?
No, I think the statute says two.
Says two.
Okay, that's a Minnesota statute, okay.
Yeah, a lot of cities run into that, you know, sometimes they just go. Sometimes the, sometimes they have an annual appointment to those committees and different things, but the E D A has has kind of those two different. And the term one, the term is hardly six years long. Now, if the city has an ordinance, putting a term limits on, beyond that, that's up to you guys, but but the terms themselves would be six years. And then let's say, you know, you're appointed as a council member to that seat, but you don't run again. That seat is still two years old or four years old as as of when I you don't run again. So then the next councillor that will be appointed to that seat. Fill out the rest of your term, plus then have, you know, their own term, not the government's, so. If you don't have term limits, that doesn't really matter, but in terms of just kind of the flow of it. They get appointed, you know, in possession, maybe it's in the resolution or. The first slate of people, you know, rotation, so over one year, two year, three year, the first kind of terms, and then all of them, six years, so.
I was going to ask on your behalf.
Oh, Carl, yes.
Counselor Cross, do you have a preference for size of the group?
Well, I think it's good to have seven, because if you're going to have two city councils, we got to get more people in town involved, because. Like at election time, nobody wants to step forward, be council people. And let's try and get people more involved. That's my feeling.
Yeah, that is my. We're all on committees, we have shorting people filling the committees, and so that's a concern I have is to find five public. People that would be of interest in doing that. Kind of a unique. Kind of a unique situation to be, to be involved with, but at the same time, it does take volunteers and find five volunteers, but. We have interest tonight, there's other interest as well, it's not here tonight, but may not be that, may not be that big an issue.
And as you said, the first slate is staggering the term, so it's not the first, everybody is six years right out the bat.
And then what I always tell my board members and the communities I've worked with is, yeah, it's six years, but if life happens, it happens, I mean, don't feel bad if you have to step aside. You know, and usually what happens, they just stop showing up, and then I will have a conversation with them, then. Okay, life happened, then we'll just get married, appoint somebody new. And and even, you know, in the worst case scenario, let's say you start with a seven board number, or seven members on the board, you can only find six, you know, to fill it. You can start with that, you know, you don't have to have a full slate, it's going to affect your quorum, but, you know, you can still operate if you aren't able to fill a seat or two, so. Keep working on it, of course, but, you know, it doesn't have to be. All set if if you just can't find somebody, the other thing that could.
Question or whatever you agree with, seven to me it seems. Is is a number to go with, but the comment is that. Well, as I said, you've got a lot of older people serving on the boards, because they have the time to be able to do that. There are a lot of younger people, the boards I've served on, they have kids in school and activities. And things that sometimes they can't always show up for meetings, and I just see sometimes here with old rush. You guys, oh, are you guys have to work to get everything together, try to get that together, you're starting another committee together. And and pretty soon you kind of run ragged. The council, because you all serve on your subcommittees, now this is another committee too, you're going to have to do another committee to do. And. You get longtime people that are really in our six years is a long term, and some of the, I see some of the younger generation. Aren't really planted. In other words, they're not going to call Ornoco or Rochester, they're not going to call that home. It's a place to light in their job, because their job down the road, three years from now, they already got plans. To relocate, and so are they really have a vested interest in what a long-term commitment is going to be? And I think those are kind of the people you need to be on there that they can, where they put in place they see through versus. I'm on it for two years and my family, I got to move and then. We're broke, you're always bringing someone more new, and I I guess as, I'm not, I don't, I'm property owner in Ornoco, I think it's important to bring three people in. Does it got the time and the member are willing to do it, that's number one on a committee, are you willing to serve and put the time forward, people say that. A year down the road, they say, well, this is a lot, they step off, you got to reappoint someone else, you got to start all over with that group. I just might, I just, as I, as I watched it, when you say so, seven is a, is a good number, but you bring some people that, number one, that really want to serve on something. And you're right, the old, older people can serve it because they have the time. But put in, and they've got some knowledge and experience.
That's a really good observation, you know, one thing that I've seen help make sure that you can get that mix is to set the meetings, you know, let the board set their own meeting schedule. You know, if it's every other month, because that's what's. All they have time for, or that's all that there is to work on, that's fine. I think Kenyon, they they do quarterly E D A meetings, Rochester, I think, has annual meetings as it or as needed, so. They're the council, so that's a little bit different, you know, most, most of them are going to be monthly meetings. But it could be at, be over the lunch hour, you know, maybe the city, a part of the budget is buying a sandwich or something like that, that's usually something that they can see. You know, down in Harmony, golf day is Thursday afternoon, so they do it Thursday morning, so. You know, seven thirty in the morning, I think Lake City does it at six thirty in the morning, so maybe not anymore, never mind. They got smart, but and Irons got an early one too, so it can really be any time that works for them, and I I think, you know, I would just lean on those members as to what works best for them.
So in the case of Dover, Yoda, I nine and Zambroda, are those five or seven, or what's your experience?
So, I notice five.
Know that for sure.
Seven, Dover doesn't have an E D A. Jackal has seven, Stewartville has five, I think. Byron, I don't recall.
Majority would have seven. I don't know what percentage that would be. All right, but that's common within your seat organization and E D As and. If if I could jump in, you know, one thing you may want to look at too is. Do you want to try and have different sectors represented, you know, you had mentioned manufacturing or something like that, but. You know, you can think manufacturing, you can think co-ops, you can think retail, you can think healthcare, school. You guys are kind of in the trifecta here of of school districts, but, you know, there's a whole different realm. Some communities do go ahead and put out like an application. You know, hey, if you're interested in being on the E D A, here's some of the functions, here's an application. You know, submit to city hall. The thing I would caution you about is if you do that, and you have five spots that you're filling, and you only get five applications. And one may not be somebody that you want on E D A, for good, bad, or indifferent, whatever reason. You're kind of in a tougher spot. But, you know, what are the odds that's going to happen, I don't know. But there, there's many different things that you can consider as you look in.
I'm happy, I sit on zoning actually, but I've got just a couple of quick questions, there's a lot of the. Actual immediate community work happen more in the subcommittees where you're trying to investigate other things and then just bring it back up. For really, you know, whatever basis it is, is that really how a lot of them operate or?
It it can, it's all kind of the personality of of your particular setup, you know, if you have staff. The staff is going to probably do a lot of that and and do that on behalf of the board, you know, you'll send them out and do whatever you're going to do. Work the work plan, bring things back to either that, you know, subcommittee or people on the E D A. You have to behold the open meeting law, so you can't have chain meetings or anything like that, where board members are talking to each other essentially, but. You know, it could be something that, you know, if there's a particular project, you set up a a subcommittee for that task, you know, if you're. Want to make a bike trail or a park project or a, yeah, anything, that could be appointed by the 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 board. Most of the committees that I've worked with in most of the cities, I guess, the the actual work happens at the the meetings. You know, most of the stuff that we're talking about, it's more a big picture, it's not necessarily. Talking about somebody's plans or specifics, it's, hey, we want to see a hotel on this corner because we think it'd be great, have you, has anybody talked to the owner that day? Or has anybody talked to this, it's usually higher level conversation at the board, but then your staff or those committees go out and. Or even just in the board members say, hey, I'll keep that on if they want, so.
Got one more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just do you have an example or two of some issues that have come from growth that maybe an E D A could help us address or choose to avoid? Help to avoid in the future, are there different niches that this would specifically help us with?
Yeah, I think so, you know, the example I always use is, what do you want to be when you grow up, right? You know, as the city grows, as the sewer plant comes online, what do you want to see Ornoco look like in ten, twenty, fifty years? You know, and what do you have to do today to make that happen? So that's really what you're looking at, I had one city where. They went and they purchased a bunch, they proactively purchased a bunch of properties as they came up to assemble all these old small residential lots. Into a compared commercial lot with the idea of getting some retail, larger, you know, big box retail there. On the flip side of that, I had another community that said. We don't want any kind of big box retail in our community, because our our tourism industry is very special and our our character, you know, isn't isn't that way. And so we need to, we need to work with, you know, planning and zoning and the city council correctly on maybe updating our zoning laws to. Make it difficult for those types of retail stores to come in, so, you know, that would be one where. I think you would have the opportunity as an E D A member, as a planning member, to have those conversations of what types of projects do we want to see here? What types of issues do we see happening or or potential to happen? What opportunities do we have? And that's, that's really what the work plan do is try to identify those things, you know. Ornoco has probably one of the best communities that's undeveloped outside of Elk Run and Stewartville in southeast Minnesota. You know, if there's going to be something big that happens in. The Rochester area, Ornoco has a lot of, a lot to offer for that type of development. Your C H Robinson data center, that that's a huge opportunity to pull out there and and. More of those types of products, you know, what 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 around those types of things with with the city likes? Or your downtown in Gold Rush, what what types of marketing can you do for the residential or parks and that, all the life, that type of stuff, so. It can really be a wide variety of things, but the big thing is, is what what are those goals that you're going for, and then how would you address those?
Yes, I could jump in here a little bit too. I I've been in my position for eighteen years, and I remember one of my first meetings was here in Ornoco. And it was an individual meeting, it wasn't a joint meeting, it was with a member of the planning commission at the time, I believe. And the statement was made that we don't want to see any growth. So, you know, as an economic development authority, you know, we're here, we can help with grants and that kind of stuff, so we've. Done that for for a few years, but in my mind, I think what Ornoco is doing is making a statement. You're making two huge statements, one with your sewer plant and one with establishing an E D A. You're essentially saying, we're open, we're ready for business, you know, take a look at us when you're looking at whatever. It's the community that's going to be able to decide whether you want. A a certain thing in a certain area, you control that by your zoning code, you control that by your your restrictions. You're also going to have control through an E D A and a council where, you know, ma- many developments. Will come and ask for tax abatement or tax increment finance. That's through an application process, it's through a public hearing, and if if the community doesn't feel that they want to invest in those things, you don't need to. So I I think you're, you have made one large statement with your sewer plant. In in southeast Minnesota in the the last few months, and now you're going to make a second large statement. That, hey, you're forming an E D A, you're establishing criteria that you can look at projects, you have a planning and zoning commission that. Is active and you're just open for business.
And just to ducktail on that, yeah, you have a a health, you know, an opportunity to work with those developers as they. So that's that's a perfect place to state that.
So, I have a question just for the. Is my still understanding that the. Tribe, the the Red Wing Tribe is still owns or is trying to get the Elk Run. Buy the property up there and establish a center. And I think that if you put this through to get ahead of the program, because once they buy that. The X base kind of goes away, and on that land, they could actually. Maybe outdo or no, if you don't have it set in place, they could actually outdo. And do the building up there and do everything up there and actually take away. From the city here and kind of kind of stunt your goals. By what they do up there, because that they're under a whole, that sovereign nation thing's under a whole different program. That they can allow or build or whatever, you talk about not having a big box where they put that there, they put all kinds of things up there. In Ornoco, if you don't put something like this in place, will never be able to catch up with, with once that starts. It's all, I that's, I just, it's the council, so I think it's an excellent thing to do what you're doing, to get ahead of the program, because. You don't know what's going to happen at Elk Run and what they're going to do, so you kind of get what you want to get ahead of it.
To add to that, they also run under a whole different set of zoning rules, they set up all their own. Sovereign nation, they don't need to follow county zoning, stuff like that.
And so they could build up there and put the stuff away and actually take away. Say if you guys put the one property that you thought could be designed to bring revenue into your town, in fact, based on your town. They go right on the hill there and you could miss out, it's a very good thing, so by doing this, I see it, you're being able to. Get a, I have started, and and you said, make a statement that we're we're. We're open to business.
You can definitely control more of your own destiny. And that's, that's really the whole purpose of the E D A is to help prepare yourself for whatever it is the community wants to see. And it's not just the E D A making that decision, it's not, you know, just a one person doing that, it's just another group of people that can advise the council. On the structure, I I think you guys want to go, so.
Keep in mind, if I can make one last statement here before you go on. You know, an E D A doesn't really control property unless they own. Where planning and zoning has some restrictions to the property, and you have restrictions within your own city limits, so I I don't want anybody under the impression that the E D A. Has the ability to control stuff, because if somebody comes in and meets all of your planning and zoning requirements. You know, had adequate water, adequate sewer, beach and parking regulations, they're going to get a building permit. You know, there, there's no doubt, otherwise you're going to have quite a case on your hands, I think, so, you know, an E D A. Yes, you can restrict things, but the way you restrict them is if they ask for things. So if they come in and ask for loan dollars or incentive dollars or tax, your tax abatement, that's the way you can control or planning, you can control setbacks and parking.
For you. Hey, sure, just could you talk, just touch base with the, about the executive director? We've talked about with that V C D, maybe with Sunny, can you share some background on that?
Most often is, you know, the bylaws generally provide for some sort of point person to, you know, execute whatever direction the board makes. And typically, that's going to be the city administrator, city clerk, you know, and it's usually just kind of an untitled. Um, what happens a lot of times in the case when they hire an outside consultant, kind of like, what will we do? Sometimes we take on that executive director role or the E D A director or whatever it is. Most often, especially in the smaller towns, it's usually more of a. Most often, especially in the smaller towns, it's usually more of a portnator type role, so you know, technically the. That might be the executive director, it's the goal of the meeting to kind of keep, keep things moving in the same direction, to coordinate with us quite a bit as, as that consultant. Or the ones that, you know, we're doing the hands-on, day-to-day, you know, calling the people, writing the memos, that kind of thing. Um, we're just not signing anything, we're not, you know, putting our name on, on things as, as the executive director, it's more of a kind of title. Title thing, just from our, um. Yeah, from, from a bigger standpoint, so if that answers the question. There isn't a right or wrong way, it's just, you know, depending on how it all works for Orno, but typically, this size town. You just name the city administrator, that, that executive director, and then if you hire CEDO, let's say. Um, we can just come in as, as that, that.
So, that kind of leads to my next question, if we have a, an E D A set up, and we also wanna have a CEDO contract, like. In the past, we've talked about one day every other week, I guess, so that's really. I mean, we're paying for this introduction meetings, which is fine, but then we also can sign up for a contract too, so they can. Would complement each other, for like grant writing, the CEDO would do that versus the E D A.
Yeah, and that's really kind of the second half of what I wanted to at least bring up tonight, I hope we'll have time to do a, a deep dive into it, but you know. It really comes down to what types of projects do you wanna see happen, you know, and so if it's a matter of something where there's grants that we can go write. Or research, if it's a, a neighborhood that you want us to work on, whether it's downtown or intersection or. Whatever it is, I mean, go attract this type of business or, or market this or where's this room. Um, that would be on the plan, and then that would be up to, kind of the E D A to direct and working on that. Like I said earlier, it could be individual board members that volunteer, just, hey, I'm really into this, I'll go talk. Um, it might be, you know, a, a joint effort, you know, it might be all of the above, so, uh, you know, it just depends kind of on the situation. But typically, it's gonna be a, a deal where, um, our person that's assigned to Orno would be doing the bulk of the heavy lifting. Um, which then helps take that pressure off of being on the committee, because there's no expectation then as a volunteer commission member. Uh, to do any outside work, you, you, you come to the meeting, you, you think, you, you put your ideas out there, and then it's staff like us that go and do it.
Yeah, I would see that, we wanna make sure that the E D A and CEDO aren't doubling up on activities.
No, it'd be totally.
Definitely gotta have a definite. Boundaries of what you guys CEDO'd look at versus the E D A looking at, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, so typically what would happen is that our staff person would report to the E D A, um, and you know, what, whatever their direction is, that's what we. Go do. So, um, you know, we've got all five minutes left here, but just kind of looking at what the, the next step would be. You know, if you look at that, uh, first part of the packet, you know, meeting number four, or meeting number three, I'm sorry. Um, you know, having, having more community discussion, reviewing the final draft of the enabling resolution, I think. Based on what we talked about here, it's something that seven member, that hybrid, you know.
General consensus here with the group and Carl, and. Knew that, I think that's the direction we probably wanna pursue, unless somebody really has some objection to that, I think that's what we'd like to do, so.
Perfect, and then, you know, the limitations that, I mean, those are the standard limitations of, you know, functioning as a, a advisory. Commission essentially, um, if you think of something else, or we're wondering something else, you know, we can always put that in there too, but what I'll do. If you guys are okay with it, is just polish this up based on that, that discussion. Um, we'll get that to Sunny, uh, for the next meeting, and then you guys can, as council, uh, take this step forward, uh, to either have your city attorney review it. Uh, publish it for, for, uh, actual action, you know, talk about, whatever you guys see fit at that time. Um, and then once that's actually, once it's enacted, um, then the E D A itself can meet once, once there's members appointed. And that would be meeting number four, so I would potentially have your first meeting, that might be a month after something in there, but it'll be meeting number three, number four. Um, but I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, within the next couple of meetings that I'm here, um, we can actually get an E D A established, I think you guys have. A little reason thought, if that's, if that's what you guys wanna have, I think you guys are ready to go one forward. And then after that, we'll help the E D A create the documents that they need to function, um, as, as a group.
We wanna kind of make it a goal for a month in the which we would like to have this. Start moving or established, like.
This, these introduction meetings, you know?
Well, not even the meetings, but I, I mean, I, it's always nice, I feel like, to have an end goal, so we know that by this month, we wanna have our first. Yeah, our first actual meeting.
My comment would, if I could suggest. Because these enabling resolutions are so common. I, my preference would be to save the CEDO time and contract money that we have available. For the actual development of a work plan and that sort of thing, and I would do. Enabling resolutions, and I would propose that it comes to before council at the January.
Carl, do you have any questions?
Would, would you suggest that being as a, uh, the final review or final approval in January? We just wanna make sure we get the publication notice there, so, so as long as you can get that, we're, we're fine, so, yep. You can do that, right?
Carl, you have any questions?
No. All right, um. With that, I think we're wrapped up for tonight.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has some questions.
The only homework I would give you is to, you know, in addition to what Congress can work on, um, think about the objects and kind of the scope. Because while the, the council isn't gonna set the work plan, I think it is important that the council set the tone and the framework of what. Those natural ideas are, um, you know, if there's anything in particular, just let that, that be known next time. I included some ideas from different towns, just to give you a flavor of things E D A can do. Some of those towns have a one-day-a-week contract, some of them have almost full-time contract, but it can be any of those things, so.
And, I'm sorry.
No, between now and January, then I guess I asked the council members to just kind of be thinking about the work plan, submit your ideas to Sunny. And, uh, see if there's any consistency of plans, we got two hundred of them, or? It's drawn ten.
And if schedules allowed, it would be nice to, to plan now our next meeting with, with CEDO folk and. Um, so that we can post that as well. We have a nice group of people here, um, some people I know were unable to make it tonight, but are interested, so. So that those people will have ideas as well, I'm sure, so.
So should we do another prior to the council meeting or a separate night?
Um, I know you'd like to double up on meetings, but, um. I, a separate, it's, we always run up into these deadlines where we're kind of have to finish something up. So if we could pick a different night.
I think that's fine, it was just December was too much, because, and this week especially. Like no extra meetings, the week of Christmas.
There you go.
Uh, with all of our other committees, the first two weeks, our third council meeting is on the seventeenth, which is the third Tuesday in January, so. You could do something on the nineteenth, that Thursday, or the next week, twenty-fourth on a Tuesday, or. Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-third would be the only night that I can.
Either works for me.
On Fridays, yes.
Twenty-sixth of the Thursday. Wrong year.
Wrong month.
Wrong date night or what?
I obviously don't have those, but.
Let's do a tentative, January twenty-sixth, at six thirty. And, uh, we'll let, we'll respond back to you, we'll.
Here that night, can we do the twenty-fourth? Or you not?
Twenty-fourth, I don't care.
Then she'd be here.
Yeah, it's the twenty-fourth, because we need Sunny to be here, yes.
I so wanna be here.
Oh, yes, well, the twenty-fourth would work out, couldn't it? Six twenty-fourth is a Tuesday night.
Six thirty is our usual time.
I appreciate time again, this is exciting, I think, like Ron said, you know, you're making a statement, you're making a bold statement, and I think this is good things ahead. Think about those projects, and any other questions you might have. It's, it's a fluid process, so, good to see everybody.
You're adjourned by.
Make a motion, we adjourn. All of them, they're saying, probably saying aye.
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 Six thirty, and we'll just start in a couple of minutes, council meeting.